The time is now 7:01 and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Monday, November 26, 2018, for the Indian Prairie School District 204. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carrubus?
Here.
Mr. Resack?
Here.
Ms. Peale?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Demme?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Ms. Grover, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have one board salute and I ask Mr. Carrubus to share that.
The board salutes the Niqua Valley High School Girls Swim and Dive Team who recently won the state championship. The Wildcats earned its first girls swimming title in style, outscoring three-time defending champion Rosary, 185 to 169, in one of the most competitive championship battles in years. Congratulations to the coaches and team on this outstanding achievement. Way to go.
Woo!
Very nice.
It's now time for our student representative report. It's from Matia Valley High School and Joe Bellmurray is with us. Hi, Joe. Thanks for coming on this snowy day.
Oh, you even wore heels, too. Okay, good evening. My name is Joe Bellmurray and I'm the student representative for Matia Valley High School. Student government sponsored the Veterans Day Assembly Matia hosted on November 9th. Dean Jennifer Reyes helped put on a great event. Matia English teacher Rob Tesman spoke about his time in the Marines and Sergeant Alan Reyes, Dean Reyes' husband, spoke about his time in the Army. I want to thank them for sharing their stories. We also had a Black Hawk helicopter drop in for a brief visit, which was pretty cool. I'm happy to say that the service branch of student government, Dumont Matia Valley, raised $5,600 in their annual hunger drive. We'll be using some of that money to donate to a loan can give more in a neighboring school district in the coming weeks. Matia's theater department put on a very successful production of Alice in Wonderland earlier this fall. Congratulations to them. I'd like to take some time to recognize the Matia girls swimming program. We had seven girls compete at the IHSA State Swimming Meet on November 16th and 17th in Evanston. Matia took seventh overall. McKenna Stone took second place in the 50 and 100 freestyle event. Kelly Wildite took seventh place in the 100 breaststroke. Laurel Bledgen, McKenna Stone, Kelly Wildite, and Amy Patterson took second place in the 400 free relay. Laurel Bledgen, McKenna Stone, Riley Stone, and Kelly Wildite took second place in the 200 free relay. Congratulations to the girls and coaches Mark Jaeger and Tom Schwer. We also had coaches Josh Robinson and Craig Tomzak recognized by the Illinois High School Soccer Coaches Association as IHSSCA Section 10 Coach of the Year and Assistant Coach of the Year, respectively. So congratulations to them as well. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan, for the snow day. We're very grateful. That's all I have for the November board report. Thank you and until next time, go-go Mustangs.
Thank you.
We don't have anyone signed up for public comment today. So we're going right to our consent agenda and superintendent report and we begin with the superintendent report.
Well, I was very popular on Twitter last night.
[laughing]
At least with the students, maybe not with the parents. So you do really see that creativity come out during those tense hours when everyone's anxiously awaiting the big decision. So I think this is the earliest snow day that we've had that anyone can really remember. So we hope, you know, we know we had lots of people traveling over the Thanksgiving holiday, so hopefully everyone got home safely. But I really hope that's the only one for the remainder of the school year. It's always good now, but then when it gets to the end of the school year, nobody wants those days added on at the end of the school year. The weekend before Thanksgiving was the annual triple I conference where school board members, school business officials, and school superintendents gather for professional development and all of our board members attended this opportunity. The Illinois School Board Association holds its delegate assembly at the conference. And I'm pleased to share that both of the beliefs statements brought forth by our district, one on local authority and safety practices and one on student voter registration, on polling, in both passed successfully and a special thanks to Kathy Peale and to Lori Donahue for bringing those up, bringing those ideas forward to this board and then on to the state level. I want to thank Mark Rising who served as our representative at the delegate assembly. And I'm not going to steal Mike's thunder because I know he's going to talk about the more controversial topic that happened at the conference in your board update. So we'll let him do that. I do want to make sure that all of our Aurora residents are aware of a public open house that the city of Aurora is going to hold next week. They've recently completed a Route 59 corridor study comprehensive plan and the open house is scheduled for Thursday, December 6th at Calvary Church between 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. And this is really an important plan because it calls for some changes in zoning and in how land is used along that Route 59 corridor. And these changes have some potential to significantly impact the school district, whether that means in terms of student population or population shifts that might impact our current boundaries, or the need for additional classroom space on the north end of our district, or financial implications for the district depending on the potential economic incentives that the city might offer future developers. So we've been actively watching this process from the very beginning and I again want to recognize Mark. He's been at just about every weekly meeting of the city to help us stay on top of that for the last several months. It's very important that our community understand the city's plans, the city of Aurora's plans, and how that may impact our school district. So we urge our Aurora residents to become informed, to attend the open house, and we will do our best to keep everyone informed of the plan and its implications on the school district. And then on a last festive note, I think I saw on Twitter that even though it was a snow day, that students were at the schools doing lighting for the upcoming concerts this weekend. So I hope you have an opportunity to see one of the high school concerts, the Crystal at Niqua Valley, the Prism at Wabansee Valley, and the Collage at Matia Valley. And they will certainly put you in the spirit of the season. We have really amazing talent in our district and I want to give a huge shout out to our talented music educators who really work hard to pull those concerts together so professionally and to IPEF for their continued support of the arts in our district. So get out and see a concert Thursday, Friday, Saturday. You have lots of opportunities. And that's it.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda. I need a motion that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items D through H.
Make a motion, Board of Education, approve consent agenda items D through H as presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peale?
Motion passes. Believe it or not, we're on our second to last item.
It's gonna be a fast meeting. You picked a good one to come.
And it's the discussion of Wheatland and the Indian Plains Building update.
Good evening, board members. We're here tonight to provide an update regarding the Wheatland building and our Indian Plains School. Tonight, what we'd like to do is sort of take the board a little bit through some of the discussion that's taken place over the past year or so regarding the Indian Plains School and that facility. We'd also like to talk a little bit about just some of the concerns that we had, continue to have, in that building and then talk a little bit about what the plan is with the use of the Wheatland building in anticipation of the move of the Indian Plains students to the use of the Wheatland So a little over a year ago at the April 3rd board meeting, we brought before the board some of our concerns specifically with Indian Plains School. Indian Plains School, as you can see in that map, has been around since 1929. There were some addition that was placed onto the building and that occurred in 1964. And it has outlived its building life. It's probably, I believe, well past decades of use of that building. And with that, it has started to show its age many years ago. Some of the concerns that we brought before this board were things like masonry work that needed to be done, roof replacement, other structural items that really were impacting at that time some of the continued use of that building for the faculty and staff and students at Indian Plains School. And with that, we needed to start to decide what we were going to do with that building, what the use of that was going to be, and what that plan would start to look like. Some of the financials associated with some of those ideas, first, we looked at what would it cost to just do a complete repair to all of the itemized things that needed to be done at that building. That came to a total cost of $1.6 million, which includes some of the things I just mentioned and other things that were itemized to figure out what it would take to continue uninterrupted programming for that building. Second financial piece of that was looked at also in terms of do we just take that building and knowing that it's past its use, decide to demolish it and decide what to do with the land in the future? Demolition costs at that time would be just over half a million Knowing the site on the north side of the district, we also took a look at what would it take to possibly take the Indian Plains Building and convert it to an elementary school. That came to a total price tag of $2 million, which includes all of the necessary upgrades and fixes that would need to take place. But in addition, things to make that an elementary school, which would be like a playground, an aesthetic, or I'm sorry, an asphalt playing area. Some of those things would push that price tag up to $2 million. And then also, what would we do if we just moved the students and then left the building structure as it is, where obviously it's an empty building, but energy costs still associated with the heating of that building, plumbing, and then also just making sure that that building is secure and checking in on that. And that would be just around $20,000. So a lot of pre-planning has gone into this since that April 3rd board meeting. And that really brings us to today. And with what we'd like to talk about next is what does this move look like for the Wheatland Building and with the move of the Indian Plains students to that. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Strang at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. So, board members, as you know, Wheatland Elementary School was emptied when Peterson was, the year after Peterson was opened and we moved the students into Peterson. At that time, we had our custodial and operations and maintenance in a rental facility within the district and we were paying monthly rent to house those operations. And we saw an opportunity to move operations and maintenance into Wheatland, not an ideal situation because it was designed as a school, not as a warehouse and a operations and maintenance facility, but an opportunity to save the district some money. And so that was approved by the Board of Education about a decade ago. And at that time, it was purely operations and maintenance. It was our, Airmark, our contractors for our custodial and maintenance group. And then we moved in food service and we've had a variety of food service vendors in there. Presently, we have Organic Life in there that operates out of three small spaces. And over time, we saw a need for some of our student populations to be housed in a new location. So over time, Wheatland Elementary School became a multipurpose facility where we had operations and maintenance, food service, and some programs for our students. With the pending purchase of an operations and maintenance facility on Shore Road, we're now in a position to convert Wheatland back to a school and find use for students. And as we've discussed that, we've looked at transition in how to make it better so that kids can use it and to clean the building up because it's been used in a fashion that has not been for kids. So Area 1 is presently empty classrooms and in pretty good shape. There's not a lot of work that needs to go on there and in short order, we'll be able to get that ready. And on the next page, you'll see kind of what the major needs are to each of those areas. Area 2 is a space where we carry some equipment for students, technical equipment that we use for some of our special needs students and where Organic Life, our food service vendor presently has their office. And if we buy the new building, Organic Life would obviously move the new building and Area 2 would be available then for students. Area 3 is the warehouse and has been the warehouse for the past decade and is presently the warehouse, but was at one time the gymnasium and lunchroom for the elementary kids at Wheatland Elementary School. And then Area 4 is an area that was at one time classrooms, but where Airmark Custodial Maintenance Group now is. And that is probably the roughest area because that has been used for the mailroom. It's been used for maintenance of small equipment like vacuum cleaners and clocks and such and is going to need probably the most extensive repair. Thank you, Dr. Lee. So as Todd and Dr. Lee and I, or Mr. DePaul and Dr. Lee and I discussed, you know, we believe we can have Area 1 done by the early January, which is pretty simple. We're going to move Organic Life out in April and have that space remodeled. Area 2 renovations will be completed by 1st of June. By August, Area 3 renovations will be completed and that's the gymnasium. We're going to, we're going to convert that from the warehouse back to a gym. Area 4 renovations will be completed in August and we'll be prepared for staff to move in well in time for the start of the school year. Area 1, the classrooms are in really pretty solid shape. They'll be cleaned and repainted as needed. We'll repair the carpets in a number of areas. We don't see a need to replace all of the carpet because that was for the last four or five years used by students. So it hasn't been a maintenance group that was wheeling equipment in and out and wasn't using it as, like the far end of the building is. And then we'll repair some drywall and update some of the life safety items in the kitchen. So that's a pretty easy fix that we can complete between now and the 1st of the year. Area 2 is an existing computer lab that is downstairs and that was used by the Professional Development Department for a number of years. And we're going to convert that into a lunchroom. So if you were into that building, you'll know that there's two large areas downstairs that used to be the library. One of those will be the lunchroom. The adjacent room next to that will be split into two offices for staff members to use to work with students as needed. And a hallway will be built between those so the kids can transition underneath the lower level without interrupting students who are in the cafeteria or students who are meeting with a social worker or psychologist or any variety of professionals in two offices. And the glass windows placed in the newly installed offices will look out into that hallway so that as the social worker psychologists are working with students, other students who are sitting outside waiting to be talked to or have a need to be, meet with those professionals can be visible. Area 3 is the gymnasium. What we'll do is end up installing drywall over the garage door that was installed when it was moved from a gym to a storage area and repaint that and hang the basketball courts. And then we would install a gym floor. We're looking at any variety of types of gym floors. As you know, we have three or four different types of gym floors in our current buildings and we'll find one that's suitable for that space so that it doesn't, doesn't wear and handles the use real well. Area 4, where Airmark Custodial Maintenance is, is the area that requires the most amount of work. One of the classrooms will be converted into two offices. Five classrooms will be cleaned and painted. Drywall and doors will be installed in office spaces. And a lot of the doorways to the hallways would probably have to be replaced as well. And the main office paneling will be removed and repainted. So that, that will be the least, the last amount of work that'll be completed and will be done after Airmark, after Organic Life is out of the building where we can get in there and get that work done without disrupting any of our operations. We know the board members had a lot of questions and we'd be happy to answer additional ones now.
So just two quick initial ones. I might have some more later. Just to clarify, are we going to use, in the new configuration, that Area 2 where Organic Life is now, if I recall correctly, when I took a tour of it, that was the offices area, like front office area? We're going to maintain that Area 2 still as a front office? And then I'm assuming there'll be that division in that locked door between Area 1 and Area 2 like there was when Wheatland was used or when Steppes was using Wheatland, correct? Is that how you envision it?
When we toured the building, because of the students that were going to be transitioning in there, the decision was made to move some of the offices, like the principal's office, the social worker and psychologist offices closer to some of the students, use some of those spaces for the nurse and other areas.
Okay.
We don't see having a locked door between both sides of the building at this point in time. The only thing that we'll end up keeping down there that is part of its current existence is our record storage, which is in the two far classrooms. I failed to mention that.
Oh, on the far north side?
Right.
Okay. And then I'm assuming since kind of Airmark has, has taken over that Area 3 and Area 4, I'm assuming we're going to start moving them out shortly once we take ownership of the other building that we purchased. And then, I mean, that's going to be a constant moving out of Airmark, out of that building and so we can get it empty by the summer and start doing some of that work?
We're going through our due diligence phase now on the new property.
Okay.
And if that all works out and we'll have a board update for you all as soon as that's completed and the, the building is purchased, the, the existing owner has 90 days to move out. If he finds a facility that's available for him sooner than that, we can close sooner than that. But at the latest, it would be the end of February. I was in the operations and maintenance department when we moved into Wheatland and we were able to move out of our rental space at Quincy and into Wheatland in two weeks.
Oh, okay.
So we would wait until it's a opportune time when, you know, we're not shutting down operations and maintenance from serving the district. But once we find the time to move them out, and they would probably be the last ones to go while we work on the other parts of the building, it wouldn't take long for them to move and for us to be able to take care of that Area 4.
Good. I'm good.
Susan?
One of the things that, that I had asked if we could discuss a little bit was our piping and water concerns. And there were some questions that we had shared earlier. But can you, I know we just, some of the things that were discussed in the, I'm not sure if those are supposed to be interim suggestions as far as bottled water, but what do we see happening in the long term?
Sure. First of all, Indian Plains is on a well. It's not one of our schools that's on city water. It's on a well. Because Indian Plains is on a well, we have to test it annually for the well. And in 2011, when we tested it, we found a couple of areas inside the building where the lead content was a little higher, higher than, than we wanted.
EPA standard.
EPA standards. And we replaced a couple of fixtures and retested and it was fine. But what we discovered at that time was that, you know, because it was on well water, we started to bring in bottled water for the students to drink and the staff to drink. There's, you know, there's the large bottles of coolers that Airmark uses.
You said Indian Plains.
I'm sorry, Wheatland.
But you meant Wheatland, right?
I meant Wheatland, thank you.
Okay.
And so we've brought in that water and we've averaged about $5,300 annually in purchasing bottled water. The water main that the city has ends on the furthest north corner of the property. And if we were to bring that water main down, we would have to pay for that water main. Now, there's some discussion about Saddlewood Shopping Center. It's the little shopping center across the street. There's a, the only thing that I'm aware of now is that there's a pizza place in there.
Okay.
That that would be redeveloped. And if that was to happen, then the city and that developer would bring the water in past our school and we would be able to tap into it much easier. All of our elementary schools that were built prior to January 1 of 2000, they have to be tested by Jan, December 31st of this year for the Illinois Department of Public Health standard for lead. And as you know, we tested half of them last year and had a couple of hits. We just finished testing 15 of them this year again. And, you know, we expect that when we give you that report, there'll be some places where we'll have to, you know, replace a drinking fountain or a fixture at a sink. And then we'll retest it. And like we did a year ago, everything was fine. So those tests continue to occur. The law is that any pre-K through 5 building prior to 2000 needs to be tested. We wouldn't be moving students into Wheatland that are pre-K through 5, but we would, at the present time, treat them like we always have and bring down bottled water, make sure bottled water was on hand to drink. The water is perfectly safe to do dishes, to wash your hands, to use the facilities in.
Okay.
So it really, it solves the problem. If we, if the board thought that long-term we're going to keep Wheatland for years and years and years, you know, ideally when the water main moves down to Saddlewood, we could tap into it. Then we would also want to re-pipe the school, which would be an expense.
Okay. When you say re-pipe the school, that means the pipes inside the school and, yeah?
Exactly.
Yeah, because even if you brought that main to the school right now, you still have those old pipes in there.
Correct.
So I'm concerned, well, comment on the transition. We're moving from Indian Plains, which is our oldest building, to our second oldest building. And both these buildings existed, were built prior to the formation of the school district. And that's got a lot of history and that's got a lot of identity. You know, school names are important to the community generally and they take a life of their own after a while. You know, Wheatland, the name is in, you know, right on the side of the building as you drive past it.
In stone.
Exactly. And we're moving our, our high school program from, from its school where it has its history and identity. So yeah, we're, you know, we've got to deal with the economics. We've got to deal with the operations and we've got moving pieces here. But I'd like to hear how administration plans on dealing with, you know, the transition from the identity and history aspect here. And it might not be today, it might not be tomorrow, but it's something we need to consider as part of the updates because that, that's important to people beyond the, in the community, even beyond the people that are using it. So I'd like to hear from administration on that issue, whether now or at a later date.
Yeah, I think when we start to actually get into the programming piece of it, I think that's something that's definitely going to be important, as you say, to talk about.
Thanks.
So I'm just going to go back. So, I'm just going to go back because I sensed some concern still over the water issue. I sensed it maybe from Susan. I, I know I've kind of got a concern about it, but, but I will say, I, I, I trust the district in us doing our testing. It's, it's well water, you know? It, it has, I grew up with well water. It kind of has a funny smell sometimes and, you know, and you have to make sure you're treating it right all the time. And I, I totally trust that it's safe for washing your hands, washing your face, doing dishes, all that type of thing. However, you know, it's, it's still a concern to me that we're going to be bringing bottled water in there. I, I think it's a good temporary solution. I, I don't think it's a good long-term solution. So, I understand the concern of moving that city water line down, but, you know, I would like to explore what the cost of that would be, whether we're maybe not be able to do it this year, maybe the following year, depending on what happens with, with that mall. I would just like to get a sense, an idea, because, you know, I, I, I don't feel it is an equitable solution long-term. So, I would just like to have a, a cost out of that for down the road. And then we can see, you know, we, we can see if, if it's something that's doable, you know, after the first year. So, I just request that.
And, and to clarify, my, my concern wasn't well water. I'm little, I, grandmothers, I'm comfortable with well water. More, my concern was more the pipe, the pipe issues. So, that's, that's where my concern was. And just the economic sense of continuing to have, bringing in bottled water versus what the pipes, if the pipe situation could be alleviated, so.
And I know I'd asked this as well, but all the sidewalk, I'd asked this to Todd, all the sidewalks and concrete and that's all been repaired because I know there was some small issues before, but I think that was done, those repairs were done.
Yep.
And then it's my understanding there's not really any ADA issues because we don't have a population that requires that? Is that what my understanding was? Okay, okay.
So, when in the, but on the ADA, doesn't the building still have to be ADA accessible and amenable for personnel in order to, any personnel to enter?
The areas of the building that we're going to utilize are.
Okay. That, that, that would, might be public, okay. Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
I'm just happy we have a place for the Indian Plains.
Yes.
Students, so, thank you for all the work and for making this happen.
Have they called the Indian Plains students now?
I don't know.
Yeah, one other, you know, a really exciting thing for them, and Dr. Sullivan delivered this, was they didn't realize that it's air-conditioned, so.
They were very happy about air-conditioning.
And, and no water leaking in the roof and probably some benefits. They'd probably deal with bottled water for a while.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I will say though, we will have to make some decisions about, you know, once we vacate Indian Plains, we are going to have to decide what are we going to do with it. So, they've talked a little bit about that, so that's just for you to.
We have to buy another piece of property. Move into that new piece of property. Move into this new Wheatland and then we can decide.
As part of the board update, I'm, to reconfirm what Dr. Sullivan said in terms of our conference. I express both happiness and pleasure that our two resolutions were passed. I also was very pleased, and I think as a board, we were pleased that the gun resolution was not adopted. I do want to thank a bunch of people here. Of course, as Dr. Sullivan said, Lori and Kathy, thanks for your hard work. Behind the scenes, Justin did a lot of work. He helps us with our rationale, he helps us with our wording. His legal expertise comes in very handy when it comes to resolutions and we appreciate that. I also want to thank Mark. During the time when the Resolution 2 was being considered, Mark provided testimony. His three to five minutes was pretty powerful and was acknowledged really at the conference to help people in their votes. I want to thank him for that. I also want to thank the community and thank the administration for allowing us to go to the conference. It's our one time to get staff development. And when you're in charge of approximately $320 to $330 million worth of community money and we need to be good stewards, we also need to get good training. And IASB Conference provides, at least me, I'll let other people speak in a second, to good training. I had the wonderful opportunity to listen to Ruby Bridges and tell her story of desegregation. I had a chance, several chances to attend equity sessions or half-day conferences. I learned more about negotiations. I learned more about how to enhance a superintendent-administration board relationship. As much as all that was great, I also had the opportunity to meet with many, many school board members from across the state and just to listen to their issues, listen to their problems, how they go about trying to solve them as, maybe as informative as the conference itself. So, I just want to thank the community for allowing us to go and I appreciate that all our board goes because we continue to need to be good stewards. Anybody want to talk about the conference experience?
That's a great summary.
I agree with, I mean, everything you said, Mike.
You know, I go to the, I mean, usually, we're probably the largest district that attends that conference because Chicago Public Schools isn't there. I rarely see U-46 there, maybe Elgin, maybe Point Field, but I, you really don't see them that much. But I'm always thankful because I always walk out of that weekend with two or three good ideas that we can do as a district, as a board, that we can have discussions on when we, you know, do our board retreat and our administrative retreat. But what I'm always encouraged by is that we've got a pretty good board. And, and studies show, and, and, you know, there's been tons of research done on this, that highly effective collaborative boards make a difference. And they make a difference with their staff, with their administration, and they have a, a, a positive impact on their students. Not only socially, emotionally, but, but, but academically as well. And, you know, I'm just, I'm happy to serve with all of you and it was a real good weekend, so.
I would echo Mike's comments, echo Mark's comments. And this particular year, I'm very thankful that the community allows us to be there because it allowed us to, with Mark's representation on the number two issue, it really allowed us to have a significant impact. And that was based on a number of the delegates that came out of that session who commented on Mark's comments. So, I appreciate the community allowing us to, to help give, provide feedback and I think helped make a decision on an issue that was very important to many constituents in our community.
Okay. Another opportunity. I don't know if you received this, but the Alliance, which is the school adminis, Illinois School Administrators, the school boards, the business officers, and the Principal Association has an Alliance Leadership Summit. That's February 26th and 27th. It's usually in Springfield. My guess it will be in Springfield because we usually have opportunity to talk to our legislators during that time also. So, just want to make you aware of that. If you're interested, please contact Jackie and we'll see if we can get to go to this also in terms of legislative action and what's really going on in our state, especially with new administration and new legislators. It might be an opportunity for us to meet some of our people who we will be working with in the legislature. I want to reinforce also the corridor study and the comprehensive plan in the public open house on Thursday, December 6th. I'm sure our constituents in Aurora will be most interested in it, but anybody else who might be interested in, I ask that you consider attending. This Route 59 corridor is pretty big. It's defined by the BNSF tracks on the north, Route 59 on the east, Montgomery on the south, and the CN railroad tracks on the west. So, it is a big area. And Aurora has come up with a big plan economically, residentially. When they say it's a comprehen, comprehensive growth plan, I began to look at some of the draft, it clearly is. But as school board members and as members of the community, I think it's important that we look at that plan. And I would use Dr. Sullivan's terms, in terms of the residential impact, that it may or may not have on the district, and also the economic impact. And we need to continually monitor what's going on in order that we would best represent our constituents here in District 204. So, I ask board members, if they have a chance, please attend. And I ask the community members to become familiar with what that plan is and possible impact it may have on our community. And I think that's all I have. Justin, do you have anything with your committee?
Kathy wants to speak.
There was, and one of the things I went to was a legislative update on Sunday and they talked about going down to Washington DC and advocating there at the national level. I wouldn't be able to do that, but I think somebody from our board would be, that might be a very good idea to, to attend. And they always enjoy having board members there because they like board members to speak about how the policies affect them in their district. So, if anybody's interested in that. That was the end of January. I was trying to look it up. I, I can't find it right off the top, but I can find it out and send it out.
Yeah, if you could send that to us, that would be great. Anyone else?
I think that Justin and I will be, not I think, Justin and I will be getting together and we will have a, be bringing forward an equity proposal for as far as a policy is concerned shortly.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for your work on that.
Anything else? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Approve. Aye.
Aye.